All right. Okay, item number 18.
General Plan Safety Element Update, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the 2013 Safety Element Update to the general plan and making environmental findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, Ms. Lamone. It's the Lamone Day. Mr. Ledbetter, Ms. Lamone, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, as you know, this item was continued to today's date to respond to two letters that we received. And Ms. Lamone will make a brief presentation to bring you up to date where we're at on those responses and the findings.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. As Mr. Ledbetter just said, we were here in November to propose the adoption of the 2013 Safety Element Update. And just as a quick refresher again, what the document is about is public safety, community resilience, and hazard reduction policies. There are several other areas of policies throughout the 200-plus-page document. And these are the different topic areas that are covered, which I went into more detail in November, so we'll just skip over today. So the public hearing was held on November 12th with the city council. A few days before that council hearing, two comment letters were submitted by two different law firms. And following the public hearing, council discussed the safety element, had several questions, and decided to continue the item to today to give staff time to respond to the written comments that were received just before the November 12th hearing. As I mentioned, the comment letters received for the November 12th meeting were from two different law firms, both representing the Imprice Trust that owns a property, a bluff-top property on the mesa. We went into a great deal of detail in the November 12th hearing about the topics that were covered in their comment letters relating to bluff-top development, coastal act policies, and regulations, and other issues raised in those letters. Our staff report for today, this December 10th meeting, went into a great deal of detail addressing all of those comments. And then additionally, just this Friday, we received an additional letter from Hollister Embrace regarding the safety element and the proposals that staff is recommending today based on the input that we received in November. As I mentioned, the council agenda report provides detailed responses to the issues that were raised in November. And as a result, we are proposing two changes to the safety element that are most easily viewed in the council resolution. The first one adds just additional language clarifying the definition of bluff-edge policy S-25 in the safety element. And on page two of the council resolution, you can see the entirety of policy S-25 related to the structural setback from the bluff-edge for slope stability. And in underline, you could see the language that we are proposing to add that addresses some of the issues raised in the November letters. We are also proposing to add some text in the safety element related to the description of coastal bluff and coastal bluff areas. And also on page two of your council resolution, item number two shows the additional language that we are proposing to add to the safety element to provide further clarification. And again, that language is shown in strike, or sorry, in underline. At the November hearing, city council members also had some additional questions that we were able to follow up with the fire department and our building and safety department. The first came from council member White just questioning the city's high-fire area defensible space requirements and whether they were still appropriate. And we were able to talk with fire department staff, and they actually provided us a very detailed response with a lot of additional information as to how those defensible space area requirements are established, other state law provisions and regulations that are involved. And that additional text was included in your council agenda report. We found it very helpful and useful, and so are proposing to add that additional text in the safety element as well. And it's shown on page three of the council resolution in underlined text. At the meeting, council member White also asked a question about soft-story construction and seismic strengthening programs in the city. Based on this issue being in the news locally, both Los Angeles is looking at the issue. There was recently an article about the City of Santa Monica's efforts in this area. And we consulted with the building and safety staff and did some additional research and are proposing to add an additional implementation strategy in the safety element that would take the first step in looking at this issue, which would be an inventory of soft-story construction buildings in the city. So we would know the number and location of those buildings. That's something the City of L.A. is about to start to do. So we thought that was a very good step. Addressing the issue of actually strengthening these buildings is much more controversial and something that we could look at in the future. But we thought an inventory would be a good step. So on page three of the council resolution, you'll see the new strategy that we're proposing to add to the safety element to have a strategy to conduct an inventory of those types of buildings. So our recommendation today for the city council is to review and, if necessary, discuss the responses to the comments that we have in the council agenda report, review the proposed changes outlined in the council resolution. And we're proposing that you adopt the revised resolution and findings, incorporating the 2013 Safety Element Update into the city's general plan today. And that concludes my presentation. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions first, and we do have a public comment speaker. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question concerning S-25. And it's really a question of wording. The sentence that begins in the middle of that paragraph that starts "for example," I don't see what that's exemplifying. If you look on page two of the resolution, S-25 is the paragraph right in the middle of the page. And let me just read this to be clear about it. "Bluff-edge setbacks shall be adequate to address long-term erosion and slope stability issues. The required development setback from the bluff-edge shall be determined in accordance with the Coastal Act, the Associated California Code of Regulations provisions, such as Regulation 13577-H, the Coastal Commission guidelines, and by an analysis that includes the most recent methodology used by the California Coastal Commission staff." Okay. "For example," and I'm not sure what this is meant to be an example of. "For example, the California Coastal Commission memorandum entitled Establishing Development Setbacks from Coastal Bluffs 2003 is provided in Appendix B of the safety element. Technical background report is provided for informational purposes only." So what is this exemplifying?
Mayor Schneider and council member Francisco, we have spent many, 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 many hours trying to write this policy. And we've had a lot of input from a lot of different people. And currently, the most current methodology our experience in working with Coastal Commission staff in issuing coastal development permits for bluff-top properties in the city is that this 2003 memorandum contains a whole host of methodologies and approaches to analyzing on a site-specific basis bluff-top development and where the bluff-top edge would be. It looks at slope stability, soil conditions, location of existing structures. It's very, very complicated. So our attempt in this policy is to identify all the possible codes and regulations that will apply and need to be considered when we look at individual property-specific development proposals. And the current proposal by the Imprice Trust is being addressed in this way, looking at the Coastal Act requirements, looking at their Code of Regulations, and looking at a 2003 memo that was done by their staff geologist that, at that time, set forth the best methodologies for looking at these types of developments. And Betty or Barbara Shelton might...
Well, in short, to answer your question, that this memorandum is the example of the most recent methodology that the Coastal Commission is using there. We have plenty of examples of the Coastal Commission using the methodologies listed in this memorandum to do that site-specific analysis.
Madam Mayor?
We have Mr. Wiley, Ms. Weis.
I have some texts that I think could clarify the question raised by council member Francisco.
Go ahead.
The sentence could read, "For example, methodologies include the California Coastal Commission memorandum entitled Establishing Development Setbacks from Coastal Bluffs 2003, provided," and I would strike the word "is," "provided in Appendix B of the safety element, technical background report, period." And then strike. "is provided for informational purposes only."
Strike that, you're saying? Is that what you suggested?
That would at least be clear, because right now, you're saying, on the one hand, this is how we determine things, and it includes something that you then end by saying, but this is only for informational purposes.
Yes, and I think it is an informational piece on methodologies. So that's the confusing part. But it is the type of methodology that is actually used. So I think leading in the sentence with "for example" helps without having to say it's informational, because it actually is more than informational. It's something that we actually follow and use.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, everyone, beat me to the point. Having worked with the staff on this, we knew that this was an example of a methodology currently being used by the commission. So Mr. Ledbetter and Ms. Weis answered, or said what I was going to say.
Okay, well, you're all on the same page. Okay. Is that Mr. Francisco? Yep?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. House?
On the next page is something that I think the first time I saw this, I just thought, oh, yes, of course. And now I just have second thoughts about it. And it has to do with Section 4907.2 on the next page, page three. It's the fourth full paragraph down. And it talks in the middle there about vegetated roofs, which in general, we, for lots of reasons, energy savings and all that, we generally encourage. Says vegetated roofs, also known as green roofs, are not allowed in the high-fire hazard areas of the city. And that section was added based on defensible space concerns. And I just had this thought, and it would be really great at some point to have somebody in the fire department that deals with wildland fire issues maybe take another look at this. Sod houses on a prairie, for instance, they withstand the great sweeping fires wonderfully. The sod and the vegetated roofs that comprise them, which are irrigated, which often have natural grasses and natural occurring kinds of things up there. And they have waterproof roofs that just can't, I mean, nothing can inundate through them, are sealed, they're not vulnerable. I mean, they're maybe better protected against something like a wildfire than a roof that is just architecturally, you know, even with tiles or something up there. So I don't know. I just realized that I have a question about it. And I know we're going to include this in here, but I wish we had somebody who could give us a little answer on that at some point. And today may not be the time. But I want to raise it, because, in fact, it just seemed to me obvious, oh, yeah, we don't want something up there that could burn. But if it burned, then the whole structure's protected because it had that much sod on the top that protected it with a better roofing system. We may be going in the wrong direction on that. So I raise that for staff, maybe to consider...
I know we don't have Mr. Poirier here, but if we're supposed to approve this, then today is the day, so...
Well, I mean, it could be approved and relooked at. I just want to raise it as a question.
Madam Mayor, my understanding is that that allowance or prohibition is in some official city document presently. So they're only reporting the current city standard with respect to high-fire zones and vegetated roofs. So I'm not sure if it's through the adopting codes or a internal fire department standard, but we can get back with you. I know that some applicants have questioned it, and it's been reported as an absolute in terms of applicants not having a venue to get an exception to this city regulation.
In the wildland fire management plan?
I think it actually came subsequent to that. It's in state law? No, no, it's a city standard. It's not state law. So anyway, we'll work with the fire department. It has come up a number of times. I think it's a city standard, either set by some action of council in combination with your fire department staff.
So the wording today in here would not alter current policy, because what you're saying is current policy already has a prohibition of green roofs in the high-fire management area?
Yes, that's correct. This is not creating that policy. It's just restating.
It's restating it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll be happy when it comes around to support this. I just think we could raise the issue so we could look at it again. And if we ever did change the city's policy on it, then we might come back and take another look at this as well.
Okay. Other questions first? Okay, Mr. Monk?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Richard Monk. Point of order, before you start my clock running, one of the principal issues that we have raised is this paper that was just referenced. And there's been some change, apparently, that's being proposed this morning, I mean, this afternoon. I've never seen.
Sure, can we clarify what that is first before you can... Go ahead, Ms. Weis.
Thank you. This is a text change to the sentence on page two of the resolution. Paragraph one, the middle, the paragraph with the sentence that begins "for example," it would now read, "For example, methodologies include," so that's added language, "methodologies include." And the sentence would continue, "The California Coastal Commission memorandum entitled Establishing Development Setbacks from Coastal Bluffs 2003, provided in Appendix B of the Safety Element Technical Background Report, period." And then deleted from the sentence are the remaining words, "is provided for informational purposes only." Also deleted was the word "is" after the paren on 2003.
You put a period after "report" struck "is provided for informational purposes only," and after "for example..."
"Methodologies include," those two words.
"Methodologies include."
And strike "is" after 2003.
Right, after the parentheses.
Strike "is" after what?
The parentheses 2003. Just strike the word "is."
All right. I don't mean all right that I agree, but I understand.
Okay, go ahead with your comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, how many minutes do I have?
Well, we'll start with two and see how you do. But if you could keep it concise, I would appreciate it.
I'm Richard Monk. I represent Imprice Trust along with my co-council attorney, Steve Kaufman. We incorporate by reference our previous written and oral comments that both Mr. Kaufman and I have delivered as well as Dahl and Associates regarding the safety element. The agenda report and the resolution both reference unspecified state regulations and unspecified guidelines regarding required development setbacks from the bluff-edge and the language, the most recent methodology that was just changed. And the resolution says that the factors for determining bluff-edge, slope stability, long-term bluff retreat, development setbacks shall be done on a case-by-case basis. But the resolution's reference to Coastal Commission guidelines is ambiguous, because, for example, does it mean the 1977 to 1981 iterations of the Coastal Commission's adopted geologic stability guidelines? Or does it mean the Coastal Commission's unadopted LCP guidance document, which is the Mark Johnson report? Or does it mean something entirely different? Also, the reference to the methodology is ambiguous, because it doesn't identify what the most recent methodology is. Well, we've just learned that they have identified it as being the Mark Johnson paper. We requested minor revisions to the resolution as set forth in Exhibit 1 to our December 6 letter. And the recommended additions were underlined and deletions were stricken. And we believe that this would achieve some clarification of what the applicable standards are. And we request that council make those changes and also attach Code of Regulations, Section 13577, Subsection H in its entirety to the resolution rather than the mere reference to it as set forth in Exhibit 2 to our letter. We've attached the entire regulation, because that is the applicable legal standard for definition and criteria for determining location of a coastal bluff in the coastal zone. The Mark Johnson paper, the conference paper, which they've now identified as being the current methodology has never been adopted by the Coastal Commission. It's not part of the California Code of Regulations. It's not part of the coastal regulations. It's a mere staff opinion, as any conference paper would be. I understand that Coastal Commission staff tries to employ that wherever they can. But we had a Coastal Commission land use consultant who specializes in this type of work make a review of all the cities and other counties throughout the state and examine their general plan safety elements. In some cases, they're called public safety elements or environmental safety elements rather than safety elements. And that review confirms that none of these other jurisdictions include Mark Johnson's conference paper as the city's proposing to do here. Nor do they even reference the paper in those elements. However, about 10 of the safety elements that were examined or general plans in other parts do reference or include the Coastal Commission adopted, actual adopted, 1977 to 1981 geologic stability guidelines, which is something that you ought to include. And about 30 of them incorporate language, either verbatim or generally, which follows the Coastal Commission's adopted bluff definition in Code of Regulations 13577-H, which we're asking you to attach. So we repeat our request that Mr. Johnson's conference paper, although eloquently written and probably relied upon by coastal staff, simply does not belong in your safety element of your general plan.
Okay.
And that concludes my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we ask you to please adopt the Exhibits 2 of our letter.
Okay. Mr. Wiley, did you have a question? Go right ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Monk, yeah. What is your sense of the effect of Mr. Johnson's paper on this issue? That's what you're wanting out of this conversation, of this resolution, correct?
What are the reasons that I want it out?
Yeah, what is the...
The reasons I want it out is that it's a mere opinion of a coastal staff member that has never been adopted formally by the California Coastal Commission. Understand that when the Coastal Commission acts, the staff makes its recommendations. Oftentimes, they go along with that recommendation, just like oftentimes you do. Sometimes, they don't. And sometimes, they overrule the memorandum upon which the staff is relying. Now, I think it's interesting and noteworthy that that conference paper has never found its way into the California Code of Regulations, nor has it been formally adopted by the California Coastal Commission. And so I submit to you that it stands as mere opinion of a staff member, which should not be incorporated into your general plan. I wrote a law review article on exclusive bargaining in the NORB when I was in law school that I thought was well-written. But I wouldn't recommend that Mr. Armstrong put it in your employee manual. So, you know, it's never been adopted. And it really doesn't belong there.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate hearing our council's assessment of that and how that piece enters into this resolution.
Councilmember White, on that last point, and I think this is clear now that we've talked about it, we're not incorporating this memorandum, the Coastal Commission Staff Geologist memorandum into our safety element. We're merely referring to it as an example of a methodology, and in fact, the current methodology being used by the Coastal Commission. It's a piece of information. And we're not saying that that's the only piece of information. We're not saying that's how we will, as a staff, define a coastal bluff when we're looking at a permit that involves a coastal bluff or a permit application. And beyond that, Mr. Monk makes this point that we merely refer to one of the regulations, the regulations that defines coastal bluff, And we don't actually incorporate the whole text of 13577 into our safety element. I just don't know that that's necessary or even makes a whole lot of sense. For example, we refer to the Coastal Act in the same sentence, but we don't copy the entire Coastal Act and drop it into our safety element. As I see it, the bottom line here is that there is no denying, from a legal standpoint, that whether it's our safety element or a coastal development application, coastal development permit application, must be approached, must be reviewed in the context of the Coastal Act and then in the context of the California Code of Regulation, Coastal Act regulations adopted by the commission. There's just no denying that. And we can refer to a staff memorandum, for example, but in terms of a hierarchy of what we're required to look at is the Coastal Act and the regulations. And whether we say it or not, that's a legal fact.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Francisco?
So, Mr. Wiley, if I understand you, So, Mr. Wiley, if I understand you, what you're saying, then, is that in the case, in the instance of this property or any other property that was applying for development on a coastal bluff area, that the determination would be made according to the Coastal Act and according to whatever else the Coastal Commission has adopted, as opposed to... I'm not exactly sure what, what the line is there.
That's correct. Councilmember Francisco, clearly, the Coastal Act is state law, and that's controlling. In fact, it's, by and large, an initiative measure, and so, in fact, it can't even be changed by the state legislature as an initiative measure. So, that's, that's a given in a way that's... Then, like most big, major state laws, it has administrative regulations, and this is true of state and federal government. You take a complex statutory scheme, and then the actual agency that has to apply that statutory scheme adopts, officially adopts, regulations. In California, they're called the California Code of Regulations. For federal statutes, they're called the Code of Federal Regulations, adopted through the federal register process. So, that's like the second priority in terms of a statutory scheme. For all practical purposes, that's the law, and that's what you've got to follow. But I think really what we may be arguing over here are things that are below regulations, and there are administrative practices that have been written up and maybe approved at an administrative level, in this case, perhaps by the executive director of the Coastal Commission, but not necessarily by the Commission itself. Or even administrative practices that have been written up that the, in this case, the Coastal Commission staff feels are entirely consistent with the Coastal Act and the regulations. And until someone tells, someone being a court, tells the Coastal Commission that those administrative practices are somehow inconsistent with the law, they help administer the Coastal Act. I hope I'm answering your question. Maybe my answer is, I've read Mr. Monk's most recent letter several times, and the reason I read it several times was, I just didn't see a substantive problem with the language we... I see he wants to change it, but I don't see any substance in the desire for a change or in the requested change of, for example, just merely incorporating the text of the regulation into the plan isn't necessary.
So, if I understand you, then what you're saying is, there's, there's the state law, there's, there are regulations that have been adopted by the Coastal Commission. There are also administrative practices that perhaps haven't been challenged legally, but could be challenged, perhaps, at some time in the future, and that we look at all of those things in making a determination about whether to grant a local coastal development permit.
That's correct. And just, just to be clear, you couldn't, an individual couldn't necessarily, I think, mount just a general legal challenge to a written administrative practice. They would actually have to have a real, what the law calls a case or controversy. They would have to have an application that, for example, maybe was denied, or they felt improperly conditioned because of an administrative practice. And I mention that because apparently, in this case, this is about a particular property owner, a particular property, who is concerned, in theory, that in the future, somehow, his application will be improperly handled because of what the safety element... And I don't know, that just seems very speculative, speculative at this point, and there doesn't seem to be a basis in what it is that we're adopting here in the, in the safety element. I mean, I just don't see somehow that we're doing something inappropriate in the language of the safety element in terms of the Coastal Act.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. House?
Just, just to really understand this, and I appreciate these questions. So, as I read this, "Structural setback from the bluff edge for slope stability" is the title of it, and then it says the intent, "Bluff edge setback shall be adequate to address long-term erosion and slope stability issues." So, that seems pretty clear to me. And then, it talks about the required development setback and this, "shall be determined." And by whom is that, by whom are they determined?
Madam Mayor and Councilman House?
I mean, it starts with the staff member, and then, as you know, in, and this is typical, in Santa Barbara, coastal development permits are decided by the planning commission. So, then, if the staff member determination is in front of the planning commission, in terms of the staff report, the commission either just agrees with it or agrees with it, that's appealable to the city council, the application of these things. And again, the council either agrees or disagrees with the interpretation. And then, in this case, it would be appealable to the Coastal Commission as well. And this would all occur, have to occur, before anyone could file a legal challenge to the application of the Coastal Act, because ultimately, this gets decided by judges.
Okay, got it. And since, because it says in the last sentence, "modifications to the prescribed setback calculation methodology and setbacks may be approved by the city council to reflect site-specific geological conditions." So, in fact, the city council could, because there's something special about that particular place, could, could have something very specific to that. Okay.
Just to be clear, it says "city," but we mean the generic. The city's the final decider, city council's the final decider around here, you know.
Oh, I see. I get it. Okay. And then, the last question is, "The prescribed setback calculation methodology," those words right there. So, if I were a staff person going through a review of a particular property, I'm guessing there's some outline as to what, or something, as to what procedure they're going to apply to making that determination and what the references are, or something. What's, is that true? And, I mean, is there, is there a prescribed setback calculation methodology for, for staff to start that process Mr. Wiley's talking about?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilman House. Staff does this analysis, but supported by professionals in the field of geologic and slope stability and engineering, environmental engineering. So, this is, it's not like a zoning standard that we can measure a setback. So, this methodology and assessment from which we make our recommendations, and ultimately, the planning commissioner, city council decides, is based on technical expertise in this, in these fields. So, if you read our certified local coastal plan, which the Coastal Commission certified and found consistent with the Coastal Act, there is a methodology that was developed in the early 80s to assess slope stability and erosion hazard and abatement of hazardous situations with new construction and buildings and such. So, that methodology lays out that you get an engineering geologist, and they consider the slope of the land and its geographic and topographic features. And then, at the end of that methodology, it has a sentence that says, "Each site shall be considered for site-specific analysis." So, the current local coastal plan has an example of a methodology within it, and it already has an allowance for a site-specific. So, this policy is consistent with our current certified local coastal plan. The guidelines that Mr. Monk referenced, the 1977 to 1981, I think the staff will remember, I pulled that out of my coastal book the other day when we were meeting. It's, you know, font, courier, size 8. You know, it's been Xerox many, many times, and it's a good document. And we, we have used that document, as do professionals, again, in the engineering field. But more recently, we have been relying on this 2003 memorandum, as, again, these developments along coastal bluffs are in the appeal jurisdiction, and we coordinate with the Coastal Commission staff. We don't want to have a local review and have a property owner go through an EIR. It's not uncommon that these projects also will have quite a bit of public review, and other people in the community will be reading these technical reports. So, anyway, that's an awful lot of work, and the Coastal Commission staff has asked, and we think it makes good sense for property owners, to be in communication with the Coastal Commission and following technical methodologies that they, too, are going to rely upon when they make a recommendation to the California Coastal Commission in the event that the project's appealed. And that very type of conversation is going on for this project that Mr. Monk represents. So, we are in conversations with Coastal Commission staff. They are aware that we're using this methodology, and they support that.
Thank you, Betty. And what about the 75-year, that, when I was on planning commission?
Yes.
We referenced that over and over again, from the top of the bluff, then there was this 75-year line that was somehow technically figured out.
This is how.
This is what we're talking about.
Yes.
Thank you.
White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, on this topic, what I was even asking Mr. Monk about, and our own council, was, is this wording going to somehow sabotage this project at this point? And I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing that there, that we're, we're still going to be able to go forward with this project and judge it severely, I mean, not severely, but at least scrutinize it very carefully. And that's, of course, and I know that Mr. Monk expects that, and that's what it's going through. So, I'm not seeing how our, the wording that's proposed here is harmful to that, to that project unfairly, shall we say. And then, also, I want to say that on the, both on the fire protection and the soft story components, I appreciate that additional wording was put in there. I think it's good cautionary material. So, thank you, staff, for that. I hope that my colleagues agree with it.
Okay, we can, does anyone have a motion or any other questions or comments on the item? Go ahead, Mr. White.
I guess Mr. House is sort of starting to, you know...
He's letting you...
Push us, push us onto our own here, and I would move, Madam Mayor, that council approve the, adopt the resolution for this, that is the 2013 safety element update, per staff recommendation. And with the changes as, to the wording, as, first of all, initiated by Mr. Francisco.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Francisco.
Obviously, I've read Mr. Monk's letters, and I take, I take these things very seriously. I think, as I understand this now, with the clarification to the language in S-25, and my understanding, both from staff and from Mr. Wiley, about how these projects go through the process, I don't think anything that we're doing today in adopting this safety element has any material influence on how that process would go. That's my understanding, and that's part of the reason, I mean, obviously, there are other reasons that I'm supporting adopting the safety element, but that is, that's my understanding. Just wanted to make that clear.
I think it was a good discussion to have, so I appreciate that, and Mr. Monk, appreciate you bringing these issues up. So, as this project comes, that project comes forward, obviously, we'll be looking at these issues very carefully. Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Councilmember...